Call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, Rockhampton City Council order. Welcome everybody here today. We've got two council members that I know will not be here, and I think Mr. Knight, I don't know if he's coming tonight.
Walking through the door.
He will be.
Walking through the door.
Walking through the door. There he is.
He's not coming.
You're not coming.
Door.
You and I have something in common. Welcome guests, staff who are here. Recognize Councilmember-elect Walker, who's with us today. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
You'll be sitting at this table sooner than later. Some of us will be sitting at home smiling. Let me acknowledge the city manager to start the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Potem, members of council. We have somewhat a resenty agenda, but we'll begin first with the 2020 conservative cost of public services analysis that's run annually by Ken Hunter. Ken?
I'll give you just a second. Good afternoon to everybody. I want to thank you all. This is something that we have done every year for a very long time. We have attempted to try to share this information to council, and we also share this information each year in the MyRockhampton magazine that occurs. And it's an analysis that we do to try to compare the cost of our combined public services to other municipalities in North Carolina. We do this on a fiscal year basis to take into account not only the tax rates, but also utilities. And the reason why we do this, the reason why we do this and why it's important is because we recognize that we are a full-service city, and that in that we not only are providing general government services, but are also providing basic utility services, full utility services, electric, natural gas, water, sewer, and homeowners, as well as solid waste services and recycling. And it's important for us as we look at what the cost is to the citizen and to the resident of Rocky Mountain is to kind of get an apples-on-apples comparison of what those costs would combined be with respect to other taxes and utilities that would be experienced in other cities. So we do a survey of 19 municipalities in total, and the reason why it's 19 and the reason why we have 20 numbers in total is because we do look at the variances that do exist in Rocky Mountain with respect to tax values and rates in Edcombe County, as well as tax values and rates in Nash County. So we do look at those independently. We take into account median residential values and the effective property tax, both city and county, for each municipality. We looked at taxes and fees on $25,000 in vehicles that would be a typical household. We look at electric service, which an average household uses about 1,000 kilowatt-hours a month of electricity. We also look at water and sewer services. The average there typically is about 3,000 gallons a month, or four units of water, as we would consider based on how we measure with our meters, as well as looking at stormwater management and solid waste fees. And again, this utilizes our adopted tax rates and utility rates, not only for us, but for the other member jurisdictions for fiscal year 2020. The good news to report is that overall, as you can see in this group, which includes jurisdictions across the state, and many of which are of similar size to us, some smaller, some larger, but generally speaking, many of them in the same size, we are doing pretty well with respect to our overall costs. Our overall costs rank about $18,000 to $19,000 a group. The only city that we're above is Washington, to our east, at about $3,850, $3,845, $3,850 on average, if you took the two counties together, which is around $320 a month. So the total cost for government services, which includes utilities, and we also take in that account in these other cities, including the fact that many of these cities are investor-owned utilities, get their service from Duke Energy or from other investor-owned services. But we take in this to account to show that overall, the value by which we try to do our best to minimize the cost to our residents in terms of the provision, delivery of these services, which are very similar to what these other full-service cities do, was some variations in how they provide utility service, is comparable, and that we're doing a very good job of being as affordable as possible in terms of the cost of those services. And this is another example of the chart. Now, again, you can see here we're towards the right, towards the lower end. The overall average for the group is about $4,500. So on average, cities or residents are paying around $4,500 a year in these 20 cities for these services. And as you can see, our services are around $600, $650 less than what you would find in those other jurisdictions. You can see there are some cities here, Wilmington, Apex, and Cary, which are significantly above the average, and as such, do have a higher cost for their public services. Overall, our costs remain low. These are some comparables that we do to show where we are in regard to other jurisdictions of note. As you can see, we're about $390 less in Wilson, $490 less in Tarboro, $500 less in Greenville, $520 less in our neighbors to the west in Nashville, $810 less in High Point. And looking to the largest one, Wilmington, we're almost $2,500 less than what the cost of these services would be in Wilmington. But how do we get there? How is it that we're able to maintain this cost? Well, not only is it a combination of doing our best to maintain costs low, but there are some advantages that we have. We continue to have overall an affordable real estate market here in Rocky Mountain, and we definitely see that in terms of the amount of interest that is coming from home buyers, even from those who primarily work and have interest in the Raleigh area or in Greenville or in other markets that have looked to Rocky Mountain as a place to reside, and in some cases, move their businesses. We also, of course, have taken action over the last several years to address the issues that we did have with electric rates. We were doing okay when our electric rates were at pre the merger and pre the buyout with Duke Energy, but we have obviously done a good job to reduce those rates and as such, be able to facilitate reducing the cost that electricity has with respect to the overall cost of public service. We also, as part of our electric system, offer significant load management credits, which we encourage our customers to take advantage of. And those are credits that they can benefit from throughout the course of the year, both with electric and heating and the air conditioning services. We also, overall, the jurisdiction has low water and sewer rates. Several jurisdictions like Wilmington have significantly higher water and sewer rates than we do. So overall, we're below average in regards to our water and sewer rates. We also do something that some other jurisdictions don't, in that we do actually assess real solid waste and stormwater fees. In other jurisdictions, they roll that into their tax rates. And it doesn't really provide an accurate depiction of the impact of it. What it also means is that you're not necessarily overcharging residential citizens for the costs associated with industrial and commercial sewer and water management. Because it's assessed by an ERU, everybody's paying after what they're actually using in terms of the services based on the amount of undrannable surface area that they have under property. Looking with respect to property tax, the average for the group is around $2270. And as you can see here, we're at the bottom in terms of the actual cost based on median property value. So as you can see, we're around $1,800, which is pretty significant. And again, that goes back to the affordability of our local housing market. In terms of all-inclusive utility costs, all-inclusive, the average is around $2262. As you can see, Wilmington's on the high end of $3451. And again, Rocky Mountain is below this at just around $2,000, $2,040 a year on average for our residential customers. Obviously, rates are going to differ. There's going to be differences based on consumptions that are applied at higher levels, which is why we don't necessarily look at them in terms of this. But when we look at it from a residential perspective, we can see that overall, we are performing well with respect to our utility cost for our residents, and this includes all utility services. This is an overall ranking, again, just to show you the conclude here. And again, as you can see, overall, we perform well not only with respect to our taxes, but when we combine both city and county taxes, which all municipal residents do regardless of where they live here in North Carolina, as well as we do very well with respect to our electric rates, as well as with our water, sewer, stormwater, and solid waste rates. So all around, we are able to provide an affordable product to our residents with respect to the cost of providing the full services that we provide to our residents here in Rocky Mountain. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
So the electric rates are also based on some kind of median or based on a kilowatt usage?
They're based on kilowatt usage, 1,000 kilowatt-hours per month, which is normal for residential customers. Obviously, customers are going to use more, customers are going to use less, but typically, that's close to the median.
So is Wilson one of those cities where the stormwater and solid waste is covered through property taxes instead of things?
Their stormwater is covered through a rate. Their solid waste, I believe, is covered through property tax.
Where's gas on this? Am I missing?
Gas, I don't have gas.
No, no, gas, the cost of gas.
We don't include gas because gas is not necessarily used by every customer.
Okay.
And because it varies depending on whether you use it for heat or use it for heat and hot water. So we have not in the past included gas. We can certainly look at that in the future. And also, not all of these jurisdictions provide gas services or necessarily have the same connectivities with the investor-owned utilities.
So the amount used in Edcombe, Rocky Mountain, as well as Nashville is the same?
Yes, it is. In terms of utility usage, yes. So their utility costs are the same. And again, we apply that average to everybody. So we assume that we base it on the idea that, generally speaking, if you were owning, if you were a residence, typically on average would be about 1,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity usage over the course of 12, on a 12-month rolling average, and looking at about 3,000 gallons of water usage. And of course, in all these jurisdictions, the sewer is applied with respect to the amount of water usage.
The reason I ask that is because, you know, of course, in the inner cities of both of these counties, you know, we have higher rates, not higher rates, the rates are the same, but higher usage, you think, by condition of the home. And so is that kind of, I can't see how we'd be saying, when you have people in one location primarily who have a higher usage overall than the other people within the same county who have better housing conditions.
Indeed. We would have to look at it a little deeper. The last time we did run the numbers overall with respect to the twin counties, and we were trying to look at it holistically, we looked at it, and it was close to 1,000 kilowatt-hours. And that, of course, was for all residents inside the city. We have not necessarily looked at it in respect to how much electricity is used for residents of Edcombe County as opposed to residents of Nash County. We have not looked at it.
But you just do some average up here, right?
Correct.
So what this report does is compares us to other cities and municipalities around us.
Correct.
But if we wanted to go deeper, are we able to segregate by address or community? So we could be able to compare apples with apples, so we could see if you're living in one neighborhood, how average rates might compare to living in another neighborhood?
There are ways that we can do that, and we have before looked at usages and other matters with respect to reward bases. We have to be careful because obviously, we don't want to drill down too low that we cause potential issues because of privacy. So we have to be wary of that. But there are ways that we can take the data and try to do more localized analysis if we choose to kind of look at a comparison within our jurisdiction. And again, that's the challenge with any type of analysis, is that obviously the nature of specific areas is going to be different. And so we have to do our best to provide the best that we can of comparison. It is certainly a good comparison to look at, even with potentially higher energy usage due to some of the factors that you brought up and that this report has brought up. It's certainly a matter that we need, that we can definitely work with this on.
Watkins.
Watkins, I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm terribly sorry. I'm terribly sorry.
Two questions, again. One on Kenton. Why are they such an outlier in terms of on the low end for electric, excuse me?
They are another municipal-owned utility. They are an Electric City member, and I believe it's how they have their rate structure. But they do have a lower, we can look at that. I can get you information on their rates specifically. But they do, they did have a lower rate structure. They did lower their rate structure to a certain degree. So they are an outlier. They're probably the most significant one. The others are pretty, the others are pretty close. What's interesting also is you have Fayetteville, which is another, they are an MOU, but they're not part of Electric Cities. They're at 1,800. And then you have some of these others, which are Electric City members that actually have higher rates. And then also, the variance that's existed in the past between us and Duke has gone down significantly. And with the next rate increase proposal that Duke is looking at, actually, it looks like Duke's rates will be higher than ours.
Is there any way to look at trending analysis? Are we able to see, like over the last, however long you've been doing the report, have we picked up or lost or some categories higher, lower, remaining constant?
We can certainly provide that information. What I can say off the top of my head, and I'll have to be general here, is that prior to the rate reductions that we achieved in electricity a couple of years back, we were kind of, we were below the median, but we were probably more in about the 12, 13, 14 position. With the rate reduction, we have dropped significantly. And in terms of the impact on property taxes, we've been pretty consistent. All these jurisdictions have adjusted their rates for various reasons. And of course, obviously, their values with respect to homes have changed with respect to their market position. And so in general, that area has remained the same. And with respect to water and sewer, we've remained below, actually.
Why do you think you've remained below, swell water?
I think some of it has to do, first of all, that we have a very good supply system with reservoir, and we've been able to maintain. And with the fact that we have that supply, we've been able to maintain our position with respect to our rates. We've not had any significant rate increases in the last couple of years. Several jurisdictions have undergone rate increases in the last couple of years. So some of these jurisdictions have seen, that's probably been the area where they've seen the most growth, has been their water and sewer bills. Wilmington's going to be an outlier because of its coastal proximity, so there are certain other factors that they have to account for in their system. But other jurisdictions, I can, if you look at it from year to year, you would see that they've also had to implement rate increases.
But if you look at Nashville, and Nashville and Tarboro compared to Rocky Mountain, in many ways, it's not, they're not comparable, it seems like. But why would there be about a 50%, 40, 50% more higher cost there?
On Nashville, I believe a lot of it has to do with sewer. They do not run a sewer system. They're a wholesale customer of ours, and so they're not really in a position to achieve any economy of scale with respect to their sewer distribution. So they have to factor that into their rates.
Ken, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Next item is a text amendment to reduce the number of historic preservation and commission numbers.
Stephen over here. Good afternoon. We kind of briefly touched on this a few months back when we were working with boards and commissions to kind of fill some of these vacancies. And we've got nine currently on HPC. We've had two vacancies for a while. We've talked with the state, Chappelle Office, and looked at some of the other neighboring communities and how many they have. And they recommend that, based on our size, our staff recommendation would be seven. And that would reduce the required number to have a quorum and hold a meeting. And then, of course, when we do that, we want to pursue certified local government status. That will open us up to more training and funding opportunities for the commission and other historic projects. We have spoken with the HPC about this. We have spoken with the planning board, but we anticipate going to the planning board tomorrow night. It was rescheduled from last Tuesday due to the local election. So we'll receive their recommendation tomorrow night, and we hope to proceed and bring it back to you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have questions. So you're recommending this gets reduced from nine to seven. So do you have a methodology to give that in a rigid detail?
Uh huh.
For how the seven members would be comprised, for some of the other, for most of the committees that the council points to, we each have a ward appointment. And so are you providing guidance on methodology? Are you asking us to go back and reevaluate how we appoint our members?
We're hoping to just bring it down to seven. In our, in the code, specifically for historic preservation, you're trying to get sort of like-minded individuals. So if you have a recommendation, it wouldn't be by ward, but it would be those that have a background in history, architecture, developer, real estate agent.
Yeah, I understand that. When we started our process, there are a few committees that do not adhere to ward appointments. But I'll just say, 20 years ago, when I first started, there were a handful of people who were calling shots on everyone. And then this council determined that everybody, every ward needed a vote. And I think the only commissions that I can think of are CCRP and maybe Historic Preservation, is that about right? Planning Board, every ward has a voice. Ward of Adjustments, every ward has a voice. Animal Control, trying to think of anything else. The one that doesn't matter. Housing Authority's mayor appointed. The mayor has saw the one that. Yeah. Man, you cleared up here right. I mean, you put me to the floor. But you can speak on that, too.
I thought the last meeting, we had a discussion, and we were sort of skeptical about reducing it from nine to seven. We want to have a little bit more discussion among ourselves in this council. And hoping that we can find citizens to fill those two positions, since there was a challenge that those two positions was not filled.
Do you have, do you have actions that are on the table that you need action, that you can't get action approval for right now? Are there agenda items that need to be addressed today?
From?
From Historic Preservation?
Not reasonably, no. We do have, so we do have seven that regularly tend, because we do have the two vacancies, and we weren't trying to put anybody out. But we sometimes have a problem getting a quorum of that group with, we've had some people that have been on there a long time. But we can pretty much give most of the items down that we need to.
Mayor?
So we've had nine. Your recommendation is to bring it five?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Now, will that be an issue with giving the State Historic Preservation Office to get that designation with seven members?
No, they actually recommended five.
Yes.
But that's like the bare minimum. And I'm just not a fan of getting down to the bare minimum when we have current members that are serving. I hate to chop it even further. But that reduces the quorum number to four, so we can do regular business and conduct business in those cases where we have people that can't attend.
If you have seven, you have four.
Four to four, yeah.
So you're, basically, you were just giving us an update for the benefit of your thinking with the planning board taking a look at it, their meeting tomorrow, with it coming back to us, I guess, next month?
Yeah, if that's your desire. We haven't given it to them as a formal, you know, to get their formal recommendation yet. We've just been keeping the HPC updated and the planning board updated, anticipating any discussion here.
I guess the reason for my question is, does that give us time to have more discussion about it? And you have to have it come back to us next month?
Point of clarification. So it seems like very true, our point is, we're serving there or not with ward appointments.
Correct.
So maybe if we go to ward appointments, and we know the person that's coming from the ward that are interested and has the background in history and architect, that it would be such a challenge. I think where the challenge probably existed, that it was not ward appointments, and we were just appointing people.
Who had an interest.
That they had an interest. But I'm quite sure I can find, well, I have one on there already from ward. So what I would just recommend, just ask the council.
And this handout that I gave you will show you who is currently serving here.
Right. So that might fix it.
Bruton, you were supposed to. Yeah, I just really hesitate to change or reduce or increase, especially reduce, citizen input, because somebody doesn't come to a meeting. I think that we're responsible for accountability from our constituents, and that if, and I think there are plenty of people in Rocky Mountain. I can't imagine, you know, who would want to volunteer, especially knowing that Historic Preservation is at the top of our agenda for reviving downtown development. I would just go back and revisit who was appointed. And I would agree in the future that we should look at our appointments for all committees, and mayoral appointments. We've done that for most committees. Questions related to that? And I think we've had discussions over the years. I mean, yeah. WB wants to make an appointment, and do they have to live in his board?
I don't think that has to, you just have to be appointed by the council.
It's still like.
I mean, you want to try to make sure that people on the board have a voice, but ultimately, that's the accountability of that elected official to his or her constituents.
And so historically, we have worked, we have managed to do that.
This is the agenda.
It's like one of those, we were.
I was asking, I was asking.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure everybody was asking.
Going forward, and what's this, I don't know, we just got anything that's already set out, or whether.
It's nothing in writing that says that, but you all have communicated with each other in the past. And it's not been unusual, really, for someone to, in fact, we've had a few currently that have been serving. A council member who wants to appoint that person has communication with a council member whose ward they live in. It hasn't been an issue that has happened.
Ms. Watton?
I was going to recommend, Mayor Potem, that since we do have, I don't know if it's on the agenda or anything, I think that's on the agenda, but we still have small, I mean, committee appointments to make in the current, well, they're back to our table today. And so I would just recommend that, this discussion, that we continue with, when we do get to these appointments, and just hope we can do it really soon, get it on the latest agenda if possible.
So what, are you suggesting that if we do that, we might be able to fill that HPC with the full?
Well, that is, make a decision about the size or whether we reduce the size or maintain.
Oh, when we consider it.
Yeah, as we consider the appointments.
WB, you have any thoughts? So the last recommendation on the table was, let's, I get the sense that people would like to keep it at nine. And so when we, and based on what Lois just said, when we get to that particular commission, we'll finalize our thinking on that item. Is that, please, is that?
It just seems like it would be, to I would, and to the authorities, and you'll share him or them, rather than one being two miles this way from here, from Cold Lake on November evening, so to speak. Then I can show lots of fifty, sixty, seventy years old. So if we could have it to be appointed, the appointment be from the ward, I think, overall, would be better.
I think if you look at it, and again, I'm just going to use just, for example, you've got John Devon, who's been very active, and you've got Sam Johnson, who's been very active. They must live in the same ward, so if one of them had to come off.
Yeah.
So if you've got people that are real active, and they're, but that's up to the council.
We're the nine-member board, so they don't, I mean, they both can stay. If we're doing about ward appointments, one can come to ex officio, which has the right to go, according to the document that I read. So I don't think that would be the case. Seven plus two, yeah, seven, from each ward, plus two.
Is it nine plus two ex officio?
It's nine plus unlimited.
Unlimited.
Or is it two?
Those rules.
It just says, it says they may appoint ex officio members. I think it's unlimited, but they don't have a vote.
Okay, oh, I see. So the sentiment I feel, I'm sensing here again, is we will leave it at nine, but we'll focus on it more specifically when we.
On staffing.
When we staff, when we look at staffing. Without any other objection, we'll end this discussion, move to the next item.
Thank you, sir. Next, well, we'll, I assume we'll need to stay up and walk through the next two agenda items, those being weeds, and then we'll move into public news sources.
All right. So again, this is Amendment to Chapter 10, Article 3, Division 2, weeds. So again, um, this is amendment to chapter ten, article three, division two, weeds. Currently have that eighteen inch standard and we want to just knock that down to twelve at least, uh, for the time being compared to those other jurisdictions we looked at and it's eighteen, we were, we were, uh, leading in the wrong way, I guess. So we want to try and get back to something more reasonable, knock it down to twelve. And, uh, there's also a, a standard in there about how, um, to maintain a hundred and fifty feet of the property on either side of the structure property line. Want to reduce that to the, uh, seventy-five or one parcel width, uh, because a lot of times they're going out to a residential structure and there may be some, some very narrow lots and we're, we're requiring those owners to maintain a hundred and fifty feet on either side. And, uh, if you're, if you're going to be at the twelve inch, if we, if we get that approved, you're, you're going to get a notice of violation if you're at twelve or more. You're going to have to cut it anyway. So just trying to add a little bit clarification and also reduce that overall height. Based on what we've seen from other municipalities in state of North Carolina. I believe this should be on your agenda since nine.
Any questions or any different thinking about the recommendation?
Support it. Thank you.
You guys recommend one more? Do one more? Okay. Proposed amendment to chapter ten, article three, division three, public nuisances. Because we passed the non-residential maintenance code, want to make an update in there to remove the, uh, the, the wording in there, the stipulation intended to be occupied for human habitation, so that now, since we've got that passed, the, uh, community code division can start issuing legal notices for non-residential properties that are open to the public and need to be boarded. And, uh, this would be consistent with what will be in our public nuisance, uh, letters that will go out, so they're aware of this standard and they will not be able to, uh, just place, um, regular just blank plywood. They're going to have to paint it and make it a neutral color, make it more, as aesthetic as possible when you have a, an opening. So this just gets us consistent with what we've got that we've just recently adopted within the last month, found this little section in the code under public nuisances and want to make that consistent for when we send those letters out.
Any questions, thoughts? Will, I will ask this. I know I've seen this at meetings I've been to and I know the rest of us have too, where some cities and probably they do it more particularly in certain areas like a downtown and, uh, when a building is boarded, uh, not only do they paint the plywood a certain, a neutral color, but they might partner with, um, local art groups or something and paint, have paintings done on there that may look like a window, you know, like a store window front. Any consideration or thinking about implementing something like that?
We, we do have, um, if, if you get around a little bit around the Atlantic Arlington corridor, some other properties, they have painted some to make it look, look like a little, uh, black trim in the middle, make it look like there's a window. But we've also done some polycarbonate with some extra funding that we have, so it looks like glass, so it doesn't look like a vacant property. So it, it says funding allows for those, uh, some people go above and beyond, but we do offer, um, polycarbonate on some areas as funding allows, mainly on the main thoroughfares and, and others. So it doesn't look like we're just boarding up the entire city, but we, it's, it's a better visual representation and we'd like to sort of enhance that a little bit more as we move forward. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, um, boards and commissions.
Recognizing to the court.
I've given you a handout and as you plan, I don't know if you want to talk about this today, I will tell you that I have three new interest forms and they are right on top. The rest of, and you can see on the very front which vacancies remain. Some of those vacancies also include people who are currently serving, who wish to be reappointed, but all of it is there for your consideration and you will see in yellow as you look through the package which ones are currently served if you want to be reappointed and which ones are vacancies. So I don't know if you want to actually talk about that today or if you just, you know, you could always make those appointments in the next meeting as well, or we'll say that. Thank you. Those are new personal history forms. You, you can, yes.
Is there, what we have on the agenda, can we do this? And I'm next.
You can, you can do whatever you want to. I mean, you can look at them and then do it at your next meeting.
Yeah.
So if you just-
I see a lot of heads shaking up and down.
There's a couple of them that do, um, one is for the human relations and one's for the, two of them are human relations and there's three vacancies. I didn't know we would want to go ahead and approve those today.
Those are new ones that you've not seen before, so the three upfront are for different boards and commissions, but they are three personal history forms you have not seen before.
Now with the workforce housing advisory commission, isn't that ward specific?
It, it is-
Plus categories.
Right, categories.
Oh, plus category, that's right, plus categories.
Right.
And I think the categories are at the bottom of the company.
So, so all of the wards has to point at several ward seven for this particular commission.
Okay.
Um, but there are a number of vacancies or category.
You want to like to approve these tonight, this afternoon, or you want to wait till next?
Well, if we are looking at, um, I can't speak for human relations, that's a ward four opening, the mayor has an opening, a ward seven. Um, workforce housing advisory commission, if Ms. Dickens is applying to fill the housing developer category. I would recommend the appointment unless anyone has objections to that.
Okay. Without objection, I'm sure you're going to. Any others we want to act on?
I have a ward four pointing for the human relations. Um, I, I do not have this personal history form, you can, I'm in this group plan and we're getting it completed. So Ms. Lorenzo Ellis, I'd like to nominate him to fill that ward four position.
Any, any questions about?
I'd like, human relations, I'd like to appoint, um, Collins to you.
Okay. These appointments-
My point, but I've got one.
These appointments will be made without objection, subject to getting a personal history form, will you appoint the, oh, is? Any others? All right. Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, yes, I would like to request a closed session for attorney, client, brother.
Okay, so everyone but staff and, uh, council, we'll see you when we have a closed session.
I had a tour, but we're going to go ahead and start, uh, our meeting now. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do begin our meetings with a prayer at this time. I'd ask council member Tom Rogers, the leaders of prayer, if you're able, please stand.
Dear God, we call us to give thanks for this beautiful day and to remember the abundance of our many blessings. We also give thanks for those who sacrifice themselves each day for us to enhance our quality of life and provide protection and safety to us. Dear God, we know that you guide and govern everything with order and your love and we pray that you would be with us in this meeting and fill us with the spirit of wisdom and may we always act with courage, strength and understanding so that our decisions advance the peace and well-being in our city. This is my prayer.
Nancy Cora.
Justin Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Jordan. Washford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
And Miller.
If you came in, there's an agenda, there was an agenda here in spots and we weren't enough, like for some, I will share with the neighbor. Well, I remember four, I now approve within minutes of my breaking schedule meeting, the city council, which was held on, uh, September the twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Are there any corrections in addition to the minutes? If not, they'll stand and submit it to you. Um, at this time, I'd like to call our city manager for a community update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as well as the public. This is a rather, um, bittersweet moment for me personally as a city manager. Uh, I've had the distinct pleasure and honor of working with, um, someone who I think has done a tremendous job for the city of Rocky Mount. I'm speaking of our chief communications, um, and marketing officer, Mrs. Tamika Keenan-Norman. Tamika Keenan-Norman started with the city April of two thousand and twelve. Since that time, the communications and marketing officer, office, which started with a staff of two, including herself, has now grown to a staff of four. The office has garnered many, many achievements, including but not limited to starting the My Rocky Mount magazine and annual publication sent to all public utilities customers, initiating a quarterly, quarterly publication that goes out to all city employees entitled Talk of the Town, completing a brand, branding style guide and along with that, this new brand and jingles and branding videos which aired on W R A L and W N C R. What I'm talking about is the Rocky Mount, the center of it all. Regional marketing initiatives such as Google display ads, advertising at the Mud Cat Stadium in the Raleigh News and Observer and on radio stations in the Raleigh and Greenville markets. She has continued programming on C I T Y T E nineteen, completion of the, and premiere of the sanitation workers' strike documentary. This office has obtained sixteen awards from North Carolina city and county community, communications associations since two thousand and twelve. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as well as the community, oftentimes in a profession's life, professional person's life, especially when their spouse, sometimes that spouse moves on and there's a trailing spouse. And for four months now, Tamika has been, um, a trailing spouse. So she will be joining her husband in Salisbury, Maryland. Uh, she will serve as a chief communications, uh, and marketing director for an agency there. So regrettably, I must, um, inform you all that Tamika will be leaving us, but, um, we certainly will miss her many, many contributions. Her last day of employment is this Friday, Thursday, next, next Wednesday. Good. I've been trying to keep, at least for the four months that I have been aware of, um, this transition, but she has done so very much for our communications here in the city and, um, I'm certainly going to miss her in many different ways, but, um, I think we're going to have a little celebration for you this Thursday. Got that date right. And I hope that the, um, community will come down and, um, say farewell and, and good luck to, um, one of our most valued members of the executive leadership team of the city of Rocky Mount.
I just want to quickly say thank you to, um, all of our citizens, the Rocky Mount City Council, of course, for your support. A lot of times people don't understand the value of communications, but the council has and has been supportive since day one. Also, our city manager, Rochelle Smalltoney, thank you, thank you. I will forever be indebted to you all. Rocky Mount is, is now home to me, so thank you. The only reason I'm leaving is because of my husband, but I love it here and I thank you so much, I can't say that enough.
I ought to try to get another husband.
We appreciate you tonight, we're going to miss you. This time, uh, we have a couple of presentations and recommendations on item number six. First one is a presentation of proclamation proclaiming the month of October two thousand nineteen, on this disability awareness, uh, employment month to the human relations director, Archie Jones, and members of the mayor's commission on persons with disabilities and human relations staff. So at this time, I'd like to ask Archie and any members of the mayor's commission to come up and receive this at this time.
This is a great group of people and a lot of them have been, um, on this commission for some time. They do a great job in our city, they're really the people with different disabilities and so, um, I want to thank them personally because they have certainly done a great job and certainly Archie, uh, as a head elect department, we thank you for the work that you do. So y'all need to come down here and get a picture. Come on down.
Three, two, and one more. Three, two, one.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Mayor of the city council, the city manager, staff, et cetera, and everyone here. I'm Jeffrey Walsh with the human relations department. I just want to make a quick announcement. Um, the mayor's commission on persons with disabilities are in conjunction with the bowling center here in the city of Rocky Mount, as well as vocational rehabilitation. We're having an event on October twenty-sixth, um, at the bowling center from one P M to four P M. That event will raise money, uh, for the mayor's commission scholarship program to help students attain college who have, who have a disability. On that particular day, we will have ten dollar tickets. Those tickets will cover two games of bowling and also shoe rental. So if you have time next Saturday, if you come out to the bowling center, uh, anticipating a really worthwhile event, please do so. Uh, we will also have tickets at the human relations department as well. I just wanted to make that quick announcement.
Thank you. Thanks for the work. Thank you all. Appreciate it. I have another presentation to make at this time, uh, and- I have another presentation to make at this time, and I'm gonna call on our Fire Chief Corey Varser and Police Chief George Robinson to come forward. This is the proclamation proclaiming October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen as honoring the nation's first responders' day here in Rocky Mount. I will read this. It says, whereas first responders include professional and volunteer fire, police, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics, workers in the United States, whereas according to a two thousand seventeen compilation of data on the emergency services sector in the United States by the Department of Homeland Security, the first responder community comprises an estimated four point six million career and volunteer professionals within five primary disciplines: law enforcement, fire and rescue services, emergency medical services, emergency management, and public works. Whereas the first responders deserve to be recognized for their commitment to safety, defense, and honor, whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Rocky Mount recognize the dedication of the city's first responders and the excellent service they provide daily and wish to publicly recognize and thank them for their service. Now therefore, I, David W. Combs, Mayor of the city of Rocky Mount, do hereby proclaim October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen as honoring the nation's first responders' day. This time, I want to all stand and thank them for the job they did. Yeah, I want to thank all of our first responders and ones that are here today and those that help keep the safe future day of the year, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. At this time, I'm gonna leave on the item number six, this is, or seven, excuse me, petitions to be received from the public. I am gonna read this statement, and again, somebody in the matter may not have been drawn to this in the past. It is petitions from the public portion of our meeting. It is an opportunity to address the council. We do value all citizen input. If you didn't sign up, somebody will bring you the form. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in many cases, council members will not respond to public comments but may refer the matter to the City Manager or staff. We ask that you come to the podium, speak in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Any personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated. We will monitor the time and give everyone an opportunity to speak. You have three minutes and we'll give you a heads up in about two and a half minutes. At this time, my first one I might call is Chris Larson. You'll come on up, Chris.
Thank you. My name is Chris Larson and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Edgcombe County Veterans Museum in downtown Tarboro. As some of you saw in today's telegram, we are bringing the traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall to Edgcombe County, close to our museum. There are over thirty names on that wall from Nash County who didn't make it home from Vietnam. And I hope you all will come. This, we're open this Thursday at nine o'clock. We have a flyover, we have ceremony at five o'clock in the afternoon. We have a flyover of jets from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. We have a Navy band from Norfolk. We have Honor Guard from R O T C units. And our speaker is Walter Marm, who won the Medal of Honor at Vietnam. I hope you come see us. We have, we are open twenty-four hours a day, so if you want to come at three o'clock in the morning, we have armed security at all hours. And I hope you will take advantage of this. The wall is three hundred and seventy-five feet long. It's longer than a football field. So thank you for your time and I hope to see you.
Thank you, Chris. And again, I've got a brochure up here, it's gonna be October seventeenth through the twentieth, and it starts at nine in the morning and goes twenty-four hours a day through the twentieth. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Samuel Battle, two sixteen Oak Street. And after Samuel would be David Ferris.
I want to address it to a candidate, one of you. Again, I congratulate you, congratulate you too for winning another term. I congratulate you when I saw you the night of the election, I mean, of the election. I was very surely in my congratulation from understanding you said, a victory party, I mean, a victory party, that a man, Samuel Battle, that had been fighting against us for two years congratulated me. And you also said that God said he wouldn't make your enemy your footstool. First of all, I'm not your enemy and I'm surely not under your foot. I am, I am a long ways from being under anybody's feet. I was the bigger person to go to you because at the end of the, end of the day, no matter who wins or lose, I certainly have been and will remain very, very, the very best for this community, realizing I promoted unity and harmony in this community, start with me. But we, we all have a part to play. It's different to work and promote unity when it's one side. I have a right, just like the people that vote for you, to support any candidate that I want to. So if you feel that I'm under your feet, rest assured that it's not the case. Again, Chris, I want to congratulate you. This is breast council week right here. This breast council week right here. And, um...
Excuse me, I mean, Ms. White. Did you have a...
Um, Mr. Mayor, did you, did you say in your open comments about public, comments not addressed a, can't be a council person?
Yeah, I did realize that you were talking about... He did. Again, Ms. Powell, every time you come up, you kind of just push the, push the limit. He did. He didn't name any names.
I understand. I just want to know why people in Rocky Mount is dying of breast cancer and we got a mammogram machine that's not hooked up at the event center. What is the problem? I just want to know.
You didn't get a call, maybe nobody knows who you're talking about.
They said stills in the creek, I just want to know. Can you give me an answer?
Yeah, I should, and I have to give you an answer.
Okay.
Because every time you come down, you're getting allegations. You want to stand and hear what I have to say?
I'm, I'm listening there, go ahead.
Number one, anybody who deals with nuclear radiation knows that the individual who's doing it is at the mercy of state and local government. Second of all, O I C is collaborating with Nash University Hospital and Nash Radiology to go through process. You don't just buy a machine, hook it up, and start using it. We're going through the process. We have documented five parties involved, and when it's ready to be open, it will be open, sir. And if you are blaming breast cancer rates on mammogram not being hooked up, you need to go do your homework, sir. Go do your homework on what causes breast cancer, where the root causes are, who's treating it, who's getting it, and who's living with it, and who's dying with it.
That's all saying, how long it's gonna take?
When we finish.
How long is that?
That's how long it will take when it's finished.
All right, Ms. Powell, that's enough. Ms. Ferris?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and fellow citizens, my name is David Ferris, I'm President and C E O of the Rocky Mountain Area Chamber of Commerce. I want to take just a moment or two to talk about something most of us in this room tonight can agree on, if that's barbecue. I hope so anyway, there's not some problem. Anyway, this past weekend, Rocky Mount hosted the twelfth annual Down East Barbecue Throwdown. And again, it was a success, the weather, you know, Councilman Rogers, you were commenting in your prayer tonight on the weather. The weather could not, I don't think it's been any better than that. We've had storms, we've had hurricanes blow through here. This was perfect. For those of you who enjoyed it, I think you would have to agree, it was as good as it gets. Food was great, entertainment was great. But I had a visitor today come to my office, he was a participant, he was a vendor. And if I wouldn't sold on Rocky Mount, sold on that event, he would have sold. Al Carter, who has a restaurant in Raleigh called Big Al's, and he was a participant here. And he echoed what I heard yes Thursday night, there were four or five vendors, I always have to go down and visit them. I go back Friday during the day, I go back Friday night, it's Saturday, I have a good time doing this. And Al came back from Raleigh today just to tell me what a great job the city always does. He said, I was here for the first several, and then a few years I wasn't, and I was back this year. He was complimentary on the city services, on setting it up, to the cleanliness, continuous cleanliness of it. He said people were picking up trash all the time. It was immaculate. The Police Department Chief, he could not have been any more complimentary with the Rocky Mount City Police Department as if he worked there or his own child worked there. How secure it was, how well the citizens seemed to act, the food, the lighting, the water, everything was perfect. Then he went on and talked about, he said, I've never been to, I've never been to the athletic complex, and I talked to people in Raleigh who have kids going here, and they echoed the same sentiment. In closing, thank you, good job, congratulations.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Dr. Koo and then Bronson Williams.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, my name is Dr. Koo, I live in two two zero South Englewood Drive. It allows council, meaning a resident petition council, to consider building a prison in Rocky Mount. If I heard correctly, the reason given was that so Kim folk do not have to go visit and look to us in county jails in either Tarboro or Nashville. I'm completely appalled by this suggestion. We definitely do not need more cages to lock people in. Rather, we have to mitigate and eliminate the courses that let people to take the wrong path. Then there are folks who got swept up for being in the wrong place at the wrong time, and you know, people who do not have money to pay bail for minor infringements. System of racial preference manifests in the unequal distribution of power and resources. Thus, within our communities, chronic deprivation of opportunities for productive work, lack of affordable housing, universal healthcare, and a meaningful educational system are the basis for the poverty and neglect we see around us. These same communities have long been ignored by the authorities which have maintained this status quo. As a result, both youths and adults are alienated from each other and families and friends. We are the way to seek expedient, individualistic, and usually negative forms of personal fulfillment, many times leading to wrongdoing, either hurting ourselves or others. We need to come together and recover our shared humanity. We need to build back the true potential of all of our community members through working and struggling together for positive social changes. Our strength lies in our unity for a common goal and with other people and communities around us. It is, it is with such a conviction that I denounce building more jails or expanding any reason to lock more people up. Thank you.
After Bronson is Quinlan Wilson.
Good afternoon. I want to thank this council and mayor for quickly funding the runoff election. One of the unites in this city certainly is our right and privilege to vote. As a city, we must continue to stay the course in developing a vibrant downtown, safer communities, a flowing and growing local economy. Rocky Mount is really the center of it all. I ask this mayor and council to speak truth to power when it comes to misinformation that sometimes flows like water through this city. When we tell our own story, it negates any manufactured stories. I commend this mayor and council that in spite of the negative things thrown at us without this government body and this city, you stay focused in improving the lives and making our city attractive to new business and industry. I often wonder what more could be done if all the residents worked together rather than working against rent. It is imperative that our mayor's office be a leading voice in creating an equitable Rocky Mount. Rocky Mount can move from better to excellence when we all work together. Thank you.
I want to wish Tamika Keenan Norman the best. She was a class act and you will, the city's loss is Salisbury's gain. I ask this council to do its due diligence in building up War Three. Many of the issues raised before the election took place, I fear may be forgotten now that the election is over. Build it up to include a focus on reducing crime, including hiring more officers and consideration of police substation in the high-prime areas, removing the abandoned, watered-up houses or remodeling them and assisting neighborhood residents with home ownership or rental. I ask that you give us much attention to the impoverished areas of our city that you are giving to the building and renovating of downtown. You think people will come to downtown once it is built up, but the truth is, if we were ever to have a reputable performer come to the event center, most of those in War Three would not be able to afford to attend the event, let alone eat at the steakhouse afterwards. Prepare our residents to qualify for the jobs that are coming by emphasizing and assisting workforce readiness, instill pride and commitment in the residents of our communities by setting examples for them to follow, not by saying words or doing deeds that are intentionally meant to tear us apart. On another note, on a recent visit to the South Rocky Mount Community Center, I was very dismayed to see that the roof hadn't missed and here that employees had to sit buckets on the floor to catch the water when it rained. Further, some of the ceiling tile had turned brown, presumably from the rain coming in, and I worry about the presence of mold and mildew which could present a health risk. Although the, the community center may be in Ward Four, it serves as a majority of our youth in Ward Three also. Seems like only yesterday I was at the ribbon cutting and this is why it is so hard to believe that the roof is leaking so soon. Either it was not replaced during the remodeling or the quality of the work that was done is questionable. If this council has not already put a plan in place to fix this problem, I respectfully ask that you do so. Lastly, we do not need to be taught how to be share purpose again. We learned to eat right and about the different food groups in school, and most of us have seen our grandparents plowing the field, I know I have. But why not encourage people to pursue degrees so they can one day own an agri-business rather than plowing the field? So they can buy the whole farm rather than toil the land. Empower people to do for themselves, this is how we make it as a successful community. This is how we become, again, a city on the rise. Thank you.
After Wayne, Danae Lashford.
Good evening. City Manager, Mayor...
Good evening, city manager, mayor, and to each and everyone, our council member, and everyone here. Elaine B. Williams, 801 Hammond Street. First of all, I would like to congratulate our incoming, Mr. Knight, Ward One, Councilman Johnner, Ward Three, and his absent, to our newly-elected Mr. Walker for Ward Four, and Mr. Dollar Tree for Ward Five. So congratulations to all. I stand to designate, to ask this council to please consider an advisory committee. For the past thirty-six years, there have been an African-American female on this council. Now that board will be missing. So please consider coming up with an advisory board or committee that will help bridge that voice to the council for the needs of the African-American female. That's my plea for you tonight. It would be greatly appreciated if you all would consider that. Like I say, for thirty-six years, it's been in place. Now that the voice is missing, or will be missing. Councilwoman Lois Watkins, we're gonna miss you. I'm sure Mr. Walker's gonna do a fine job, and I really appreciate the youth coming up to the board. But we're gonna definitely miss you, Mr. Walker, congratulations. We're gonna definitely miss you too. But thank you all very much. I thank y'all for your hard work, your consistency. I really appreciate each and every one of y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Today, I was gifted a Love Rocky Mountain t-shirt, and I got it with a bow.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But, but, you know, it shows me that there are a lot of people that love Rocky Mountain like I do. I'm a, I'm a native of Rocky Mountain, I was born and raised here. I'm a proud graduate of Rocky Mountain Senior High, from the largest class that ever graduated from there, the best class, nineteen eighty-eight. So I appreciate this. And it, it, it shows me that all over the country, people are finally learning to live together and, more importantly, to coexist. December first, nineteen fifty-five, Rosa Parks, the mother of the modern civil rights movement, refused to give up her seat on the segregated bus. Sixty-four years later, and two hundred years into the city's history, the citizens elected their first African-American mayor. I hope that we mirror that here in Rocky Mountain. But, more importantly, the move towards unity in our city is happening. I don't know if I would have received this, or if I would have taken it a few months ago, but I, I took it because I, I met these people at the, we were at the meal, we were talking, we were all enjoying Rocky Mountain. We were just, you know, and I saw that somebody else enjoyed Rocky Mountain like I did. It, it, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take a good faith effort from all parties, it will take prayer, understanding of different perspectives, and, most importantly, the capacity to love. But I think if we do those things, that we will be able to come together and solve some of our issues. Now, there was something that was said a few minutes ago. I didn't grow up on the farm. My grandmother and grandfather had a farm, I used to work here every summer in Wallace, North Carolina, down at Duke and Academy, where Mr. Walker belonged in front of. I used to have to go down there and work, and I, I've done it all, feed chickens, to do everything, I would even fry them in a pump to get water. But the thing that it did teach me, and I went to college, I'm a college graduate, but the thing that it did teach me is to work ethic. Those people, I don't discount anything they ever did, because they worked so that we could have better lives. But they also showed us what a work ethic is. So farming is one thing, yes, and we have community guards, I think it's great, and it's gonna help us to teach these young kids a work ethic, something that they don't have. So thank you.
Maury Mendez.
Good evening, our mayor, and our city manager, and our esteemed city council. My name is Natalie O'Ree, and I am the third vice president of the Rocky Mountain branch of the NAACP. Now, the NAACP was founded in nineteen oh nine, and the mission of the NAACP is for the advancement of colored people to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all persons, and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. And I stand before you because the eyes of America have been looking upon Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I believe that with the leadership that we have, and the oncoming leadership, that you have demonstrated a high level of respect for one another, and for the people that you serve. And I am a resident of Rocky Mountain. I am very proud of you, and I'm so proud of where we have come from, and I have, can see a great vision of where we shall go in a continued environment of respect. Thank you.
Mr. Mendez, and then I'm gonna let you take the mic, I think, to Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, I'm Maury Mendez, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. First of all, I'm really, as a former teacher, back in the olden days, when there was a real Rocky Mountain Senior High, Phil Ford era, boy, that tells you all the way. Is there, I'm just really upset about our Nash Rocky Mountain City Schools in the tanker. D and F rating, what the hell is that? How did it get that bad? I know a lot of teachers, and they are excellent teachers. So what's going on? Does anybody in the city council, do you have a, an advocate, or a member, or whatever you want to call it, that sits on the school board, or they just get our tax? So we just give them tax and let them do what they want to do?
They have a board?
I know they have a board, but let me tell you, they must be asleep. But anyhow, that's what I really want to know. Oh, and also, the whole thing, a couple of years ago, I attended for a very good reason, and the tickets were like thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Now they're fifty dollars apiece. I was hoping that my seventh ward representative would be here, so I could ask her, but why'd it go up so much? I mean, if my husband and I got that's a hundred bucks, is it really gonna be worth it? I don't know. Anyhow, thank you, and please, don't let her. And I'm so glad that on the barbecue thing, everybody kept saying in the paper how clean everything was. They obviously did no, not go down three of one in front of my shop, because I didn't get out there and clean it up. But please, everybody, try not to.
Mr. Turner? You can sit down and speak if you'd like, if you're fine with us.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm gonna try to talk to him, and I'd like to respond to what I heard, what I heard from different people. The very thing is, you have a closed meeting tonight. I am impressed with the number of people that are here. I can't get my stripes in too. Obviously, you give them something. Until then, I'm impressed, glad I came. But what I had in mind was the answer to authorize the city being his own home. When I looked around, I saw a familiar face that, that I could draft somebody. Do that all the time. I'm stuck, I heard, proud, I heard. Even the criticisms, I'm proud, I heard what they had to say. They had time to say what they had to say. That's a, that's a blessing. Thank you.
I'm glad you could not let this turn, I've been mayor almost twelve years, and he's probably been to more city council members than anybody out here. Didn't have to be here. So, thank you, Mr. Turner. Our last one is TJ Walker Jr., who'll come forward.
Good evening, mayor, council. I want to say thank you, first of all, for all of your tenures on the council. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for being able to do what you do to serve our city, and I thank you for all of your guidance, assistance, and prayers in this election process. I look forward to serving Ward Four and the citizens of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I look forward to us working together so we can unify and be able to progress the city and move forward, and make Rocky Mountain the city that it, that it can be, and that it will be, if we all continue to work hard. So thank you all for your work, and I pray that you will continue to do great things even beyond your tenure, and I pray that you all be able to have great nights' rest. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our petitions that we received from the public, we're gonna move on now to the rest of our agenda items. Item number eight, this is a consideration of ratification of a letter to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's an environmental review for activity and projects, categorically excluding subjects to Section fifty-eight point five. This has to do with C D B G Housing Repair and Code of National Partnership Programs, recommended actions to ratify the execution of a mayor or letter, and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Environmental Review for each activity and project. This time, we consider motion. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Watkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item eight's approved. Item nine is a consideration of project ordinance appropriating funds in the Public Safety Grants Fund. This is for receipt of assistance to firefighters, the grant's a hundred and fifty-four thousand. The theme of it is a hundred and thirty-eight, against some change, and our matching fund is fifteen thousand. Recommended actions to adopt the ordinance. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of, one, approval of a receipt of two thousand nineteen Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice for JAG Award, and, two, a project ordinance appropriating funds in the Public Safety Fund. Recommended actions to approve the receipt of the grant funds, including authorizing the city manager to execute the grant award in special conditions, and, two, adopt the ordinance. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Watkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is a consideration of preliminary assessment role, this is prepared to recover the costs incurred by the city in connection with the housing code enforcement on the following properties, and there are three properties there. Recommended action is to adopt a resolution of determination of cost of repair or demolition of certain standard housing structures, two, adopt the resolution of preliminary assessment role, and, three, schedule a public hearing for November the eleventh, two thousand nineteen. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of fiscal year two thousand twenty, fifty-three oh three Metropolitan Planning Program Grant. This is from the N C DOT. It is a city-designated federal transit administration receipt for the city of Rocky Mountain Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is for various planning activities for the Transit Department. Recommended action is to approve the grant agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required documentations and certifications. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved, or item twelve, excuse me. Item thirteen is a consideration of requests for water services outside the city limits. This is due to the proximity of the city limits and feasibility of providing additional city services. Properties are not good candidates for annexation at this time, the three properties there, and the recommendation is, one, to approve the request subject to payment of required privilege and connection fees as established in our administrative policy, and, two, authorize the city manager to execute annexation and water service agreements on behalf of the city. Now, your motion. Yes, Mr. Bullock, I think you have a motion to the end. Second. Second. All right. Motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item thirteen is approved. Item fourteen is a consideration of an ordinance pending Chapter Twelve. This is a city code that reduces the maximum allowable height of weeds or grass to twelve inches. It has been eighteen, and it reduces the minimum allowable distance of growth from property line of a structure to seventy-five feet or one parcel width, whichever is less. The recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Watkins and Knight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Item thirteen is approved. Item fourteen is a consideration of an ordinance, excuse me, that was number fourteen. Number fifteen is a consideration of scheduling a special call committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, October the twenty-third, at two P M. for the purpose of going into a closed session for discussion relative to the personnel matter. Move to approve. Second. Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. We also have one other item added to the agenda, this is to go ahead and announce that we're gonna have a, on October twenty-eighth, at two o'clock, there will be a committee of the whole meeting, and we just need to get that public notice tonight. Is there anything else? Yes, Mr. Mayor. And that's at two P M. on October the twenty-eighth.
Mr. Mayor, for, this is, question is for the manager. So, Madam Manager, would you give us an update on the improvements for the roof in South Rocky Mountain?
Yes, ma'am. That, that roof actually is being reviewed now by our property and management team. As I understand it, there have been bids put out for the repair of the roof, and at some point very soon, we'll be able to make an award for it.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the council? If not, thank you all for being here tonight, and we're in there.